For tonight, up first, it's Finance Manager Kevin Ingles and Audit Firm Managing Partner Jim Hinkle, here to discuss the 2022 Annual CAFER. Actually, it's now Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Audit Results. Good evening, Mr. Ingles.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kevin Ingles, Finance Manager for the city. Also with us is Jim Hinkle from our auditing firm of Hinkle &amp; Company. Okay, so this evening, sorry about that delay. We're going to present to council the 2022 Audited Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Hinkle, and he'll go through the audit process with you. Just a couple of highlights we wanted to point out to you. At the end of 2022, the city's total net assets exceeded its liabilities by 238 million. Of that, 112 million is for governmental activities, and 125.8 million is for business-type activities. For the governmental activities, that 112.5 million, 23.9, is considered unrestricted and can be used at council's discretion. For 2022, total city revenues increased 13.9 million when compared to 2021. And the cost of the city's programs increased 9 million when compared to 2021. So, most of you probably know that the city is required by charter and state statute to have an annual financial audits. Also, when the city expands more than 750,000 of federal funds, we're required to have an additional single audit. The city was required to have that for 2022. Related to the American Rescue Plan Act funding, we're also required to have an additional report that is submitted to the U.S. Treasury Department. Each year, the city's annual financial report is submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association Award Certificate Program. That program reviews the reports for compliance with accounting principles and other applicable legal responsibilities. We're pleased to announce that our 2021 annual report received this award, and that was the 39th consecutive year that the city has received that award. This was also the 43rd overall year that the city received the award, and that puts Inglewood in a tie with Denver and Greeley for the fourth-most awards received in the state of Colorado. So those are the highlights we wanted to hit on the annual report. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hinkle now, and he's going to go through some of the details of the actual audit.
Good evening. My name is Jim Hinkle with Hinkle &amp; Company CPAs, and we did perform the annual audit of the financial statements for the year ending December 31, 22. Just to kind of give you a brief overview, we start our audit with our analysis of the city's internal accounting controls. We then select random samples of disbursements and payroll transactions, and we test those control features within the internal controls to determine if they're operating as intended, as well as whether they can be relied upon. We do that internal control work for a couple of reasons. First, we want to see if there's any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls. Those are specific terms in our industries. A significant deficiency is defined as the likelihood of an error going undetected in the ordinary course of business. And a material weakness would be a significant deficiency that is material to the overall financial statements. And based upon our analysis, as well as all of our testing of the control features of internal controls, we did not notice or determine there were any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control structure. That's the answer that you all want to hear. It also gives us the basis to determine our audit risk with respect to the financial statements, and from there, we design our test of audit procedures, primarily test the details, which is pretty much what it sounds like. We drill down into account balances, and we test individual transactions that make up that balance. And then we also use analytic review procedures where we compare the current year of the prior year, current year of the budget amounts, assets to expenditures, liabilities to revenues, things of that nature, looking for things that, relationships that we either did not expect or can't explain, and then we do more test of details for the actual audit work. The end result of that is our audit opinion on the financial statements. The opinion is an unmodified opinion, or in layman's term, it's a clean opinion, states that the financial statements have been prepared in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. So that's also the answer that you want to hear. We issued a letter called a required communication letter. We're required to communicate in writing whether or not we find or have significant items to communicate. And in your case, we did not have anything to communicate that was required. We did not have any difficulties with management. We did not have any disagreements, any problems in the audit. We did not make any adjustments to the city's books and records, nor did we have any items that we could have adjusted for, but we felt they weren't large enough. So we did not have any adjustments with respect to the books and records. So all, and all's clean. As Mr. Ingles mentioned, the city spent more than $750,000 in federal award money. Requires a single audit. That name comes from the fact that you have one audit firm that comes in, audits the financial statements, but also compliance with federal award programs, as opposed to various federal departments coming in with auditors and auditing their own departments, federal wards. So we basically issued two audit opinions with respect to the federal wards. The first is in what we call compliance with government auditing standards. It's kind of an overview opinion. It looks to see if the city has the internal control structure in place to determine what federal programs it participates in and what the compliance requirements are for those programs. Sounds pretty basic, but sometimes when money's passed through the state, it gets a little bit convoluted. And then if we find any compliance errors on any programs, we have to communicate that. That opinion is also an unmodified, a clean opinion, that the city does have the controls in place to determine the federal awards and the compliance requirements with those federal awards, and that there were no compliance issues at all. The second one is what we call in compliance with uniform guidance. And under the federal standards, we're required to select specific programs and then test those programs for compliance. So we'll select random samples of disbursements. We'll go in and look at the individual compliance requirements, and in this case, we looked at the ARPA money. And there is the internal control structure in place to ensure the city complies with the ARPA program and that we did not find any compliance issues with that program as well. So that is also a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion. So all the reports that we issued are unmodified and clean opinions, and we did not have any issues with respect to the audits or any adjustments. Finally, I'm sure Kevin, if you hadn't already, will file the financial statements with the state auditor's office by the required deadline. And because there is a single audit, we are required to file the financial statements with the federal clearinghouse, and that has already been done as well. So all those filing requirements have been taken care of. And the last thing that I'd like to note, it's kind of behind the scenes, but we like to rotate the primary partner that is involved with the detailed audit itself so that we can have fresh eyes coming on to the audit periodically. And we did that with Timothy Alho Peltow, our Quality Control Director, taking charge of the day-to-day audit and the risk analysis, as opposed to me. And I've stepped back so that we've had some fresh look as far as the audit approach, keeping things, what we like to say is a little bit unpredictable, so that the auditees can't predict everything that we're going to do. And that allows us to have a stronger audit as well, and we did that as well. Any questions regarding the audit process?
Mr. Hinkle, Mr. Ingles, thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions from members of council? Go ahead, Member Russell.
And I don't know if this is necessarily about the audit processes, but on page 123 to 133, it says at the bottom, "See independent auditors' report." And I didn't know where to look for that. I mean, I looked. Basically, it's the statement sheets on Liking Wood Environmental Foundation, the McClellan Reservoir Foundation.
So what that refers to is what's called, there's a paragraph in our audit opinion, the pages, that talks about supplemental information and that our audit procedures on that supplemental information is in relationship to. So that's what it's referred to as an in-relationship-to-opinion, that basically, we did an audit of the financial statements, and the supplemental information that you just referred to, the procedures that were performed were in relationship to the overall audit of the city, and that we did not audit those things by themselves.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And then this is probably for Mr. Ingles. On page 76, it talks about the volunteer firefighter's pension. And so if you could kind of explain that to me. I had a person call me a few years ago that was a volunteer fireman, and he said they told him that we've turned that over to Sheridan.
So, no, the volunteer plan is still run by the city of Inglewood. It is part of the FPPA program, and it's managed by the state, or it's controlled by state statute. But we're still in charge of making the contributions. FPPA handles disbursements and benefits.
Okay, so if we're in charge of making contributions, and maybe this, well, this doesn't apply to the audit, how would someone who claims to be a volunteer firefighter apply for benefits?
So they would, the FPPA handles the administration of it for the city. So yeah, I could certainly get you contact information if you'd like.
That would, that would be great.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Any further questions for members of council? Seeing none, Mr. Ingles, Mr. Hinkle, thank you very much for the presentation and going over our annual CAFER, which we no longer call, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Moving on to the second agenda item, we have the Director of Parks, Rec, Library and Golf, Christina Underhill, Deputy Director of Parks, Rec, Library and Golf, Brad Anderson, and David Flaherty of Magellan Strategies, here to discuss the Parks and Rec Bond Voter Survey findings. Good evening, Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll make a correction. Ryan Winger, he is the Campaign Strategies Director and Polling Project Manager with Magellan Strategies. He'll be here to present the information that we received in the survey that we sent out to our Inglewood voters. But earlier this year, we did contract with Magellan Strategies, which the city has done before for other bond projects, to develop a survey regarding the potential projects we may have to offer for bonds and understand truly what the Inglewood voters are looking for and what they would support. So Ryan's here with those results tonight, and tonight's for information, but we're happy to answer any questions regarding the survey or any of the projects that have been proposed. We plan on bringing the potential bond option back to you later this summer for council to determine if we'd like to move forward with this or not. At this time, I'll have Ryan join me.
Thanks, Reshina, and thank you all for your time tonight. And hopefully, you find this data helpful as you have some decision-making ahead about whether to move forward with the bond. So just real briefly, we'll talk about the methodology for the survey. So we were able to complete interviews with just over 1,000, with 1,036 registered voters in Inglewood. And the way that the survey was conducted by sending a text that looks like the left side of the screen there, inviting them to participate in an important survey, informing them what the survey would be about, and then just, again, prompting them that their opinion matters, and responses will help the city in decision-making going forward. So the results for 1,036 interviews have an overall margin error of 2.98%. And importantly, they are weighted to be representative of what we expect voter turnout to look like this November. And I know there's a lot of numbers on the screen there, but really, what we want to highlight there in the red box is the last odd-year election, which is what we consider to be the most comparable election to what to expect this year. And you see really the difference between an odd-year and an even year, particularly a presidential year, which next year, we would expect to have more than double the turnout than what you're going to see in an odd-year. And primarily, where that, where you see the impact of that is in the age groups. So even though when you're talking about registered voters in Inglewood, that 18 to 34 age group makes up 36% of all registered voters in Inglewood, when you have an odd-year election, they're going to make up roughly 1 in 5 voters, compared to a presidential year where they're going to make up 34%. So that, that difference is just something to keep in mind, that that lower turnout is just says something about the electorate to expect in an odd-year compared to an even year. And here, we just, for anyone viewing the presentation who's not familiar with the districts here, we just included this image of the district map, sort of as an icebreaker question before we jump right into questions about the bond measure. We wanted to get a sense of the usage of these parks and rec facilities, even though obviously not all these facilities were tested later on in the survey because they're not part of the potential bond measure. But here, you can see kind of ranked from, from top to bottom as far as usage, that, that blue bar there being those who say they never use the facilities. And then on, on down the list, Bellevue Park being, and Inglewood Public Library being most commonly used at least once a year. Large numbers visiting them at least once every three months, so quarterly. Then you see the Inglewood Rec Center, you see Pirate's Cove, Mally Rec Center, and Broken Teak Golf Course. And I'll just highlight the Rec Center and Pirate's Cove because those are two that we're going to talk about here in a minute as, as part of the potential bond measure. Compare that, so compare these numbers, you know, 69%, 69%, 59% saying they never use these facilities to this slide, which asks, "How often do you or someone in your family visit a city park, playground, or open space area?" And there you see the never percentage. And, you know, I think that's important when we're talking about potential voting behavior, right? If someone never visits one of these facilities, they're pretty unlikely to be swayed by the benefits they may get from them, right? So here, we only have 8% saying never. And a large number, over, over half of respondents saying that they visit them at least a few times a month. You know, actually, nearly three-fourths of respondents said they visit the park, or a park, playground, or open space area at least three times a month. And we have there, and I won't focus too much on, on the specific demographics in the interest of time, but we do have demographic breakouts there. And you can see that, you know, usage is, is higher. Park visitation is higher among younger voters than it is among senior citizens that are 65 and older. So because of the nature of, of this specific potential bond measure, we wanted to ask, "Do you approve or disapprove of the job the city of Inglewood is doing managing park and recreation areas and facilities?" The reason we ask a question like this is because we need to know whether there is something underlying some kind of discontent that voters may have that has nothing to do with the specifics of the bond measure. Otherwise, you, you might fall into the trap of thinking, "Oh, if we just tweak this or tweak this, it might do better." Well, we need to know, is there some larger issue at hand that, again, is not related to the bond measure? And what we see here is that that's certainly not the case. Three in four voters approve of the job that the city is doing managing parks and rec areas. Only 15% disapprove. And you see that 10% there who, who are unsure. But long story short, long story short, no reason for concern on this measurement. We also want to ask, again, before we get into specifics, "Do you agree or disagree with the following statement? The city of Inglewood is fiscally responsible and spends taxpayer money wisely." Again, if, if someone disagrees with this statement, they're much less likely to approve of a bond measure, regardless of what the specifics of that bond measure may be. And we see again here, 57% agree. So nearly 2 to 1 agree versus disagree margin here, which is a really, it's a solid measurement and, and pretty well in line with what we see in other communities up and down the front range. You know, I, I know you may see this in, "Oh, I wish it was higher than 57." 57 is actually a pretty solid measurement. And then again, you do have the 15% that, that don't feel well-informed enough to even give an opinion on this question. So now we're going to give them some context, give them some more information about what we're going to, the, the specific nature of what the survey is going to delve into. Please keep in mind that these projects will need voter-approved funding to be completed. So we're giving them information about projects. And then after reading the information, please indicate if you'd vote yes and approve about measure to fund that project, or if you'd vote no and reject it. And important to note there that because this survey was conducted all online, we're able to provide them with images and diagrams so that they can see exactly what we're talking about as far as parks improvements, which is obviously something you can't really do on the phone. And I think it's just important to know, to know that the respondents in this survey are very, by the end of the survey, they're very well-informed on, on what they're going to get with this potential bond measure. And here's how they, they basically stack up. When we, when we rank them based on those who would say, yes, they would approve a ballot measure if that specific project was included. And you see there at the top is new irrigation system for parks. And so forgive me, I'm kind of going to jump around these slides here. Here's how we laid out and described the new irrigation system. And, and I think what's really driving a lot of support for this is the description that it is significantly more water-efficient and reduces wasted water usage and lowers the city's cost. You see there how we lay out all of these projects. We lay out the cost, but not just the overall cost, what, what the cost would be annually for a homeowner so that they're able to get a sense of, okay, what are we really talking about here? How much is this going to cost me personally? Rather than just throwing out a big number that they're, you know, would have difficulty conceptualizing. So this new irrigation system description is the most popular of the eight when we asked them individually, because 75% would vote yes and approve a measure specifically for new irrigation systems for parks. Then we have smaller park improvements combined. That one is right here, is how we spelled it out. Again, these are just six regional parks altogether. We're laying out the cost to voters. We're laying out the specific costs as well as the overall cost and what these improvements would entail. Again, we included pictures to demonstrate them. That one, two out of three voters said yes, I'll vote yes, and, and approve that if that were included in a ballot measure. And you see on down the list, you know, we broke out Bellevue as far as no farm improvements, and then the Bellevue Park farm improvements, Miller Park, Little Dry Creek, Pirate's Cove, and then the Rec Center. And I think what you really see is that those top five are over 60%. That's, that's a solid measurement. In any pre-election polling, we like to see 60% supporter higher, just assuming that there's going to be some kind of external factors that come into play, whether it's a crowded ballot or whether it's just general economic downturn. You know, you don't want to hang your hat on, you know, 50% plus one and, and just think you're going to be solid hanging in November. So those top five meet their criteria. They're up at 63%. Little Dry Creek Plaza, let me flip to, to how we described that. This project got 55% support, or 55% of voters said they would vote yes and approve it. Those are the improvements that we laid out for them and the $4.4 million cost, what it would cost each home value. So that one saw a little bit of a drop from those projects above it.
Mayor, if I can interject for a moment? So sorry.
Oh, yeah.
May I?
Go ahead, City Manager.
I do need to just interject. There was one error in the council communication, which I made in an edit, which referred to the EDDA, the Downtown Development Authority, potentially picking up the 4 million for this park. Really, as we've talked to the Downtown Development Authority more, that number looks like about a million. They, they already have program for some public art enhancements in that area and potentially up to 2 million in bonding. But really, that, the funding for the 2 million is already allocated to other things, but they are willing to have a conversation about that. But should be noted that they do not feel like with their current funding stream, they could have that full 4 million, but are very willing to discuss that further.
Thank you very much, City Manager Lewis.
Yeah, and so really, where we see a clear drop to under 50% is on the Pirate's Cove Water Park improvements and the Inglewood Rec Center improvements. You know, not surprising, given the usage that we saw at the beginning of the survey. And I really think those two, you know, can kind of be grouped together as distinct from these other projects, which are, you know, deal with parks and open space. Those are facilities, obviously, that, it, it's not that they're unpopular, right? They still, the, the Pirate's Cove gets 49%, and the Rec Center gets 46% of the vote. So it's not that they're dramatically unpopular. They just are not as popular as the other park projects that, that were described. For context, here's how we described the Pirate's Cove. We included images of what these improvements would look like. Again, the cost and the cost for each homeowner. Same thing on the Rec Center. We included images of, of what the improvements would look like. And again, you can just kind of, you know, imagine the average voter who doesn't visit the Rec Center not really being persuaded by a, a surf simulator, right? Or, you know, if, if they don't, if they don't visit Pirate's Cove, you can see why this number would be a little bit smaller than when we're just talking about parks in general. But, you know, of course, the, the million-dollar question is, actually, let's do this first, which project is most important to you? And we're asking kind of a, actually, a forced ranking of them to say which project would be number one, which one would be number eight. Not surprisingly, the, the new irrigation system for parks actually was most commonly rated number one. 28% of respondents said, "I, I really like the idea of the new irrigation system for parks," and they, they liked how it was described and just the benefits that it would have for the city. And, and the other thing I'll just point out there is Pirate's Cove was the most likely to be ranked number eight. That all being said, obviously, the, the million-dollar question is, what if we combined all these projects into one ballot measure, right? So we're, we're kind of taking all the amounts, we're totaling them up to say, here's what the total cost would be, and here's what the total cost would be for the average homeowner or for a home valued at $500,000. So if a bond measure to pay for all the parks, rec, and recreation improvements described in the survey was on the ballot this November, how would you vote? And, and here's what we found, is that 53% would vote yes and approve it, 35% would vote no, and 12% are undecided. So we're, we're falling short of that 60% threshold that we really kind of aim for. At the same time, there, there definitely is some, you know, reasons for, for optimism here. You see strong support among 18 to 44. You know, if, if there was kind of a concerted effort to make sure they come out to vote at kind of a higher number than they do in, in typical odd-years, that would be encouraging. And then you see, obviously, you know, differences in support among those who've lived longer versus less than five years. In Inglewood, strong support there for the newer residents, gives them something to get excited about as well. So we wanted to not just leave it there, but ask, "Why would you vote yes and approve the bond measure?" And not surprising, this is pretty typical for any park and rec project. They just view the projects as important for them and their family and just for the overall quality of life in Inglewood. They, they like the idea of funding parks and, and recreation because it's something that makes the city a, a, you know, an appealing place to live. Among those 35% who would vote no, again, not really surprising with any kind of ballot measure that's going to raise taxes. There's just a general belief among these 35% that taxes and inflation are already too high, and so that this is not the right time. They believe that money should be spent on other priorities. Among those who mentioned other priorities, infrastructure and water were prominently mentioned. And also, some in this group want the ability to decide on projects individually, right? Which is, it, it kind of makes sense, right? If they want to view each, each project on, on its own merits. You know, of, of course, at that point, you end up, you know, with eight, nine, 10 different ballot measures on the ballot, which is not exactly a recipe for success either, because the ballot just gets very long at that point, right? Importantly, we wanted to also give them this information. So important to understand, we didn't give them this information before. In, although we talked about so far, they did not have this information. But we wanted to introduce this idea that there are bonds that are expiring at the end of this year. And so the actual increase, when you consider that these bonds are paid off and will be expiring at the end of this year, is not as much as it, as it otherwise would be. is not as much as it, as it otherwise would be. And so knowing that information, we asked again how they would vote. And you see, it does, it's, it, it jumps up a little bit, right? So fifty-seven percent say they would be more likely to vote yes, uh, if they knew that, or, or knowing that information, there, fifty-seven percent are more likely to vote yes. Uh, twenty-four percent are, uh, more likely to vote no. Those are the folks that say, hey, that sounds like I'm getting a tax cut, I'd like to keep my tax cut, kind of thing, right? And then twenty percent say no difference in their opinion. But you see that fifty-seven percent who would be more likely to vote yes, you know, when you kind of graft that onto the fifty-three percent on the original ballot measure, you can see that we, we're getting close to hitting sixty percent at that point, because you are able to persuade some no voters simply with the idea that, I know that number seemed pretty high, but what if I told you it's not actually that high? The reason why, why we did it like this and not, not before is because you, for one, you can't assume that everyone's gonna be educated and know heading into, uh, November when they're gonna vote, or really October in our case. Um, but also just because it's not gonna say anything about that in the ballot language, right? So we, we need to stay true to what's in the ballot language. And whatever effort can be made to educate, uh, people about this, uh, expiring bonds, great. It would only, you know, increase the upside and, and potential for success in November. But we wanted to kind of include this almost as, as kind of an afterthought, what if you knew this? And I think it does, it, it, respondents, um, you know, respond very well to it. Um, it's just a matter of, you know, you're talking about eight to nine thousand people who are gonna vote in November. It's not cheap to educate them and make sure that they know that this is going on. We also wanted to just, uh, ask for additional thoughts or suggestions from, from the respondents. Um, among the yes voters, again, nothing, nothing really different, they just have general support. Um, and also just requests for specific projects in their neighborhood or things like that. Um, and among the no voters, again, they just reiterate that, that they believe that taxes are already too high and that the city should focus in other areas. Um, here's the demographics, again, where possible, we wait these to match what we expect turnout to look like in November or so, on things like gender, party and age, where we know, uh, definitively what turnout has been in the past odd years. That's what we're using to wait. Um, and then tenure in Inglewood, you see there that the, the two largest groups are that one to five year, and then the more than twenty year, those, those are kind of the folks that, that jumped in and participated in the survey. Um, you know, pretty good mix on income we're able to get, and a pretty good mix across the different council districts as well. So with that, I will take any questions that you all have.
Thank you very much, it's Mr. Winger, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Mr. Winger. Uh, open it up to questions for council. Anyone wanna kick us off? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
Thank you for the presentation, it's very helpful. Um, can you tell us a bit more about the instrument? So there's no live calls, it's all online. How does that apply across all the demographics that we obviously are trying to capture? How many, um, incompletes did we get? How do we feel about the sample size? And are people going through one question at a time and proceeding to the next? Or is it one long list, and just trying to get a sense of, um, voter fatigue, survey overwhelm? How, you know, we get, as we get closer to the end of the survey, there's a lot of information in here, a lot of technicalities. How are we feeling about the quality of the data?
Sure, yeah, I, I, I can say I'm very confident in the data. Um, you know, this is really a methodology that we've adopted in the last few years. Um, as, as phone, uh, response rates are really declining. I mean, no one answers the phone anymore if they don't recognize the number. Um, and, and certainly to take a, a survey at this level of detail over the phone would be next to impossible. Um, but what we found is that the, you know, the, this kind of survey, um, does turn out to be very accurate in, in November. Um, you know, we also, we actually did a survey for the, for Inglewood last summer that, that turned out to be accurate as well. And while it wasn't quite as heavy on detail as this one was, it was kind of the same format, right? Where you, um, have some icebreaker kind of, uh, benchmark type questions. Then you talk about what the ballot measure would include. Then you, um, you know, provide them any other information that may be necessary, and then you maybe ask them again, right? So basically, what we did is, among the twenty-six thousand registered voters in Inglewood, we have, um, a cell phone number from the voter list for fourteen thousand three hundred roughly of them. So did everyone in the city get a text message? No, unfortunately, we don't have a cell phone number for all twenty-six thousand registered voters. But we're, we're very confident in that fourteen thousand three hundred, because they, the, the demographics of that group that we have a cell phone number for don't differ dramatically from the demographics of, of what we would expect, right? So I, I don't believe that there's, you know, any particular demographic group that we're not catching with the survey. And I think that that obviously, um, is why we've had good success, um, you know, conducting a survey like this in, in a community like Inglewood. Um, you know, could we get away with conducting a survey like this in, in certain types of communities that are maybe, you know, much older or much more, you know, resistant to technology? Maybe, maybe not. Uh, but in Inglewood, I, I can say I'm very confident in the data. Um, and you, you know, you'd be surprised for, uh, local, you know, ballot issues like this. People will hang in there and they'll, they'll take the time. I mean, we completed over a thousand, uh, interviews, which, you know, given the fact that we're only expecting somewhere to eight to nine thousand total turnout in November, to, to complete a thousand is, is really strong and a solid number. Um, so yeah, obviously, are some voters gonna get fatigued by it? Of course, that's, that's naturally gonna happen. Um, but I think on this one, I, off the top of my head, I'm not sure the exact number, but typically, the completion rate, once they get into the survey, is around seventy percent, right? And so it's not as if, you know, only ten percent of people are hanging with us. Uh, the, a large majority are hanging with us throughout the survey, so.
That's really helpful, thank you.
Any further questions from council?
Actually, I think I may have a question for, I think this would be more for the Director of Parks and Rec, uh, Director Underhill. Um, I appreciate the information. I'm, I'm just kind of curious about, uh, the open space fund as well that we get from Arapahoe County. Um, I'm just thinking in terms of just some of the fatigue towards the actual dollars, uh, towards this, um, that we're applying towards this. Could we be using some of the Arapahoe, uh, open space funds for some of the smaller projects? Whether that be the pocket parks or some of the other infrastructure improvements? I'm just trying to figure out what's, what some of our options are if we weren't to do, um, you know, for the full amount that we're potentially proposing tonight.
Sure, there's definitely an opportunity to utilize some of the open space funds. A lot of those funds are allocated annually for a lot of our projects that we work on year by year, um, that aren't changing. Irrigation systems are not cheap. Um, I think we said that's around three million plus, um, to renovate our park irrigation. And that's obviously was one thing the voters did want us to look at doing, um, if we have this opportunity. So, um, there is opportunity to look at the funds, um, and allocate differently if needed. Um, part of this too, if, if this bond, depending on which direction we go, if it would pass, um, it would also help us build those funds up for future improvements. Our costs will go down because we'll have new systems, new amenities in our parks. Um, and so we'd be able to stretch those open face, space funds, uh, further every single year, which is exciting for Inglewood to have that opportunity.
Thank you, Director Underhill. Uh, Member Noonan Camp.
Sure, I have one more question. Um, I appreciate the, uh, connection between where voters or where the survey respondents placed Pirates Cove and the Rec Center, especially with usage rates. And this might be for the pollster. Um, but they're also the two most expensive projects, uh, on the list. I haven't had a chance to go through all of the verbiage, but do we have a sense on if it was cost or was it usage?
Uh, it, it's probably a mix of both, I mean, to your point. Um, but yeah, I, I do think the, the cost combined with the usage is not really a great combo for those two. Um, but I do think there's something to be said for, you know, the, the, the people that do get excited about those two, get, get very excited about them, right? And so you kind of have to weigh the, the downside to discouraging people who may be, you know, big advocates for them. Um, but I think it's, it's pretty clear in the data that there are kind of two tiers. There's, there's the parks and open space projects, and then there's the, the Rec Center facility projects, so.
Any further questions for members of council? Go ahead, Mayor Proton.
Uh, I'm most curious about the free form feedback and how, if at all, that gets quantified. You gave us some suggestions on the free form feedback, but as I, as I read through it, particularly as I read through the no's, there are a lot of concerns expressed in the community about how we manage things currently. Um, and I, I didn't necessarily see that captured in the summary you gave, um, other than, you know, the general complaint about the tax rate. So, uh, is there other free form feedback that might be useful for us as we consider this going forward?
Yeah, so I mean, that's, it, it's obviously hard to do it on one slide, right? When we're talking about, you know, thirty-five percent respondents, and we're talking about, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of, of three hundred fifty voters, right? How do you, how do you kind of consolidate all their thoughts into one slide? But, but really, the, the second point there, that, that money should be spent on other priorities, that's kind of an attempt to say, you know, look, this, this city should be doing other things, they don't trust what's going on right now. So maybe could have phrased it a little bit differently, but, but that's, that, that second one is kind of where those people would fall in, in my mind. Uh, because, you know, they, they're the people that say, oh, the city should be doing this and this and this. And because they disagree with the priorities, they don't trust what the city's doing so far, so.
Thank you.
Member Woodward.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Um, question, with regards to the bond funding, if, if this were to pass, and, and what I'm thinking is if we lowered the number of the fifty million dollar number and took longer time to do all these improvements, so we would have funding coming in through Arapahoe County Open Space, that type of thing, on some of it over a period of, I don't know, just as an example, five to ten years or something like that, would that be helpful? I mean, some of those things we're gonna have to do anyway, if we have, if we cut off, uh, the Rec Center or Pirates Cove or something like that, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously, if you're talking about, uh, dropping from that fifty million to a lower number, is that gonna increase support? I, I think of course, because, I mean, to Councilmember Noonan Camp's point, that cost is what's driving some people to vote no, right? And so, um, if that cost were to come down, and if it were to come down because, um, you removed a project that someone didn't like, then they would be certainly more likely to vote yes and approve it. Um, you know, I also, there, there's still gonna be some folks that say, yeah, taxes are still too high, I can't swing it this year. But you, you are gonna win over at least some of those voters to say, oh, I couldn't stomach that, but, but maybe this smaller number I can, when I think about all the benefits that come along with it. So certainly something, and that's why we kind of do the survey the way we do, so that you can rank and prioritize and say, okay, if we have to cut, we need to know where to cut. Well, hopefully, the survey data can, can help you in making that decision.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any further questions? I don't see any further questions. Mr. Winger, thank you very much for the analysis of the, uh, survey. Director Underhill, thank you very much as well for all the information.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, uh, we have about fifteen minutes or so in order, uh, to begin our council meeting, so we'll recess until then. See you at the top of the hour.
Right, the other thing too is, when you get into that, they need things above three and a half feet. You go, you put one person per twenty-five square feet of surface area. So you can't have as many people in that pool. The majority of the people who use that pool are all showering. So when you go to three, zero depth entry to three and a half, and you put one person per dance floor feet of surface area. So what we did is we opened up a body of water to service more people than what we're currently doing. And also, there's structural issues with that pool. There's leaks and stuff, so we're gonna have to do some splash. But I wish it was just splash down.
Yeah.
That's the other problem. Those were decisions that were very important when you set down the team and, and just evaluated, you know, what, what could we do to serve the best, the, the big thing is, well, the swim team in the morning, there's ten people. I mean, we went from thirty to forty, ten down to ten, maybe, the deep water classes had fifteen in it.
That's probably, I, I'm guessing, I don't know, it's probably similar in golf.
Exactly. Or look at the high school swim team. I mean, they can be a little more stable.
Well, they used to that round pool.
They did. And, and, and that's not only in Inglewood, that's around all over. You know, especially when you get into the deeper water areas, to, of course, they can't, in those spots. Now, there's a lot of places out there that have got swim clubs, which are the servicing of people that do that. But then, the other thing that happened in high school sports, you know, with those kids, is they have so many opportunities to, for so many sports. And then the other thing you get into is, now unfortunately, they want to specialize in one sport. So they don't, they don't do the three sports.
Having coached soccer for so long, and Jason going through sports, and for him, he has time to enjoy the kids. Play all the sports. Play all like you can, or.
And then you don't get the burn.
Yeah, enjoy them all, have fun. And, uh, yeah, Jason, senior year, he lettered in golf. Football and soccer, blowing the fall season, so he lettered in football, which is more of an accomplishment. Um, yeah, so that's, yeah, the other, I guess, the thing that I've noticed when I tried doing indoor for Rec Center, deep water, I couldn't because my feet.
You touch.
Yeah, it was more than touching. I think I went to about two classes and said, I'm screwing up my feet by doing this, as opposed to getting the benefit of the others. So it, you know, another foot or something, but, 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 that's what it is, it is what it is. What is that, five feet?
It's five feet, it's a little bit over five feet.
Yeah, but I'm shrinking, so maybe I'm five. I'm literally, I went from almost six one to five feet was the last time I was in, and it's like, what's going on? Well, no, that's horrible, that's, that's, you sure?
You do, we compress.
Yeah, I know, it's all on my feet and it all hurts down in the bottom of me. Yeah.
You have problems coming out of the cock and, you know, it's what, what this is, everyone.
Well, that's the hard part, you know? Yeah, it's not about it. Works twice, twice a week.
Twice a week, for now. And I might look at, I wish we had more land and we could put a bigger pool, isn't it? That we'd have that immunity too.
Yeah. You know, we did go back to, when we had one, um, middle school.
It's the third.
Well, that's where the swim team used to go. Pre, pre Pirates Cove.
Yes, yes, and, and we did, and actually, we used to have thirty, forty kids on the swim team.
Yeah.
And, and we looked at that option, or do we want both? Because I, I presented that to Jerry. Do we keep this for outdoor? Do we do just classes out of that class? Do we do the swim team just out of that one? And then it, it really wasn't feasible, because we were losing twenty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, you, you can't do that without the school.
Yeah, we had a refurb, a snack, and the school. Yeah, we had to refurbish that, and the school just didn't want anything to do with it. We offered it to them and said, yeah, there's what you could do, and what was even in high school. They offered it to us.
See, I, that kind of, I mean, to some degree, I disagree. They, they hold the standard for them. And. Take, let them in, do all the landscaping, landscaping, some stuff, control it, running, and. Let us get the field down at St. Clair. It's like, it's filled with dandelions. You go out there for soccer, these kids will get stung by these the whole time. Bring it up to the school, it's like, so, it's good for them. Pilk's up there near me.
We maintain it better.
Well, there's no question about it. I, I figured when the school district took it over, the hills that goes down, somebody was gonna be rolling down that hill and wanting more. I just thought, God, I can't believe it. I mean, I live right there, it's, you know, I've spent a lot of time.
Right.
Walking with Jason and John. Oh, thanks. Oh, well. Well, that, that'll, yeah, you, you, we may hear something from some of these people. You know, I told them, I, well, I would bring this up, you can look online and see it.
Right. Going there from Barney Woodley.
Well, where do you look? Well, look under this council meeting tonight.
And then the stuff we put out, like in the Direct Center, there's, there's a QR code up at Pirates Cove, where they can go and they can see the plans on all, all of the boxes.
Yeah, this is a hard one, fifty million.
It is.
I don't, I'd hate to see it. Not.
Members of council, if you could please be seated. Members of council, if you could please be seated. All right, everyone, we are back. I call this meeting to order. If you're able to do so, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. City Clerk, if you could take a roll call.
Yes, good evening. Councilmember Anderson?
Present.
Member Noonan Camp?
Present.
Member Russell?
Present.
Mayor Potem Ward?
Present.
Member Wink? Member Woodward?
Present.
Mayor Sierra?
Present.
Six present and one absent. The one absent is Councilmember Wink.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda, agenda item five A, minutes of the regular city council meeting of June fifth. Any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve five A?
I move to approve five A.
Thank you, Member Russell. Could I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Could we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
At the record show, six ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item six, we have several appointments, communications, proclamations, and recognition. Up first is the recognition of the National Association of Government Communicator, uh, Award of Excellence for a Public Engagement Campaign of less than one thousand dollars for the, for the Flow It Forward campaign. And I'll just throw in a few words, uh, regarding the award. The Communications Department, Public Works, Utilities, and South Platte Renew were recognized with the Award of Excellence by the National Association of Government Communicators for the city's public engagement campaign, Flow It Forward. This association is dedicated to advocating, promoting, and recognizing excellence in government communication, providing professional development opportunities, and the ability to share and communicate best practices in communication. The Flow It Forward campaign was and remains focused on communicating improvements to Inglewood's three utilities, water, stormwater, and wastewater. Explaining these complex systems in ways that average citizens can understand, while providing context to recent rate increases and major upgrades to our underwater, uh, excuse me, underground infrastructure. Congratulations to our Communications, Public Works, and Utilities Department, and South Platte Renew on this honor. And I believe, uh, our Director of Communications, Chris Harkett, will come up and take a picture with me in recognition of the award. Thank you, Director. All right, we're moving on to the recognition of Stephanie Carlisle for service as President of the Colorado Clerks Association. Uh, Stephanie Carlisle was elected as the President of the Colorado Municipal Clerks Association on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, at the organization's annual conference in Canyon City. Over the years, municipal clerks have become key positions in local government, serving as a direct link between the residents of a community and their government. As President, Stephanie has, has had several achievements, including continuing to build the professional development and educational opportunities provided to members, engaging with and communicating to all members of the organization through weekly newsletters, overseeing revisions of the organization's handbook, and planning for the twenty twenty-three annual conference in the Institute for New Clerks. Uh, Stephanie has a long history, history of commitment to her professional, uh, excuse me, to her profession, the city, and to the, uh, Colorado Municipal Clerks Association, and was recognized with an award for outstanding contribution to the organization in twenty twenty. Thank you, Stephanie, for your, uh, commitment to the city of Inglewood and to the municipal clerks, uh, profession. And Stephanie, I'm not sure where you went, but congratulations, there you are. If you wouldn't mind coming up here and taking a quick picture and. All right, we're moving on to, uh, six C, which is Park and Recreation Month proclamation. Yes?
I did wanna notate that Councilmember Wink is online.
Perfect, thank you so much for that, Member Carlisle, or, excuse me, City Clerk Carlisle. Moving on to six C, which is the Parks and Rec Month, uh, Month Proclamation. Uh, whereas since nineteen eighty-five, people in the United States have celebrated Park and Recreation Month in July to promote building strong, vibrant, and resilient communities, whereas parks and recreational programs are vital, vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of our, of community members, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the city of Inglewood and our region. Whereas the city of Inglewood Parks and Rec, uh, Recreation Department launched in nineteen forty-nine, when a group of interested community members organized a citizen recreational council and began providing basic recreational activities to the community. Whereas eighty-five percent of Inglewood residents reported using the city's parks, and eighty percent reported using the city's recreation centers as part of the development of the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Whereas the city of Inglewood has a strong history of supporting parks and currently maintains seventeen program parks with facilities, including athletic fields, off-leash dog areas, open space, pavilions, playgrounds, a skate park, and tennis, and pickleball courts. Whereas the city of Inglewood has a strong history of supporting recreational programs and proudly maintains and manages the Inglewood Recreation Center, the Malle Recreation Center, Broken T Golf Course, and Pirates Cove Water Park, as well as outdoor recreational programs such as the Farm to Train Program. Now therefore be proclaimed that I O'Neal, Sierra Mayor for the city of Inglewood and the city council hereby proclaim July as Park and Rec Month in the city of Inglewood, and urge all residents to enjoy our many beautiful parks and recreational facilities. Moving on to Liberty Day proclamation. All right, um, the proclamation reads, whereas in early seventeen seventies, more and more, uh, colonists became convinced that the Parliament of Great Britain intended to take aware, uh, their freedom and saw a pattern of increased oppression and corruption around the world. Excuse me. Whereas Great Britain began to prepare for war in early seventeen seventy-five, with the first fighting in April seventeen seventy-five in Massachusetts. In August seventeen seventy-five, the King, the King declared the colonists in a state of open and avowed rebellion, and colonists began to seriously consider independence. And whereas colonists elected delegates to attend a Continental Congress, which adopted strict rules of secrecy to protect the cause of American liberty and their own lives. And whereas on June seventeen, uh, excuse me, June seventh seventeen seventy-six, Richard Henry Lee introduced a resolution that these united colonies are and have right out to be free and independent states, and appointed a committee of five to write an announcement explaining the reasons for independence. And whereas To- Thomas Jefferson began writing the Declaration of Independence, borrowing from existing documents such as the Virginia Declaration of Rights, he hoped that his words would serve as an expression of the American mind. And whereas, less than three weeks after Thomas Jefferson began writing, he presented his draft to the Continental Congress. On Jul- uh, July second seventeen seventy-six, the Continental Congress voted in favor of declaring independence. And whereas, two days later, on July fourth seventeen seventy-six, the Con- Continental Congress voted to ratify the text of the Declaration, and John Dunlap, official printer to the Continental Congress, worked throughout the night to set the Declaration in type and printed approximately two hundred copies. And whereas, July fourth has been recognized in, as Independence Day, a federal holiday since nineteen forty-one, and Americans often celebrate their independence and freedoms on this day through festivities, including fireworks, parades, concerts, and family gatherings. And now therefore be proclaimed that I O'Neal, Sierra Mayor for the city of Inglewood and the city council hereby proclaim July fourth twenty twenty-three as Liberty Day, Independence Day, and encourage all citizens of Inglewood to celebrate the independence of our nation and the freedom of individuals. And moving on to the last proclamation, the resolution appointing members to various boards and commissions and committees. I guess for this, I think we just need a. I, I guess, are there any changes that we wanna make to the resolution that we're appointing members tonight? Go ahead, Member Woodward. Go ahead, Member Woodward.
Yes, I would like to add Mr. Mitchell Waldman to the Inglewood Election Commission. In addition, he's already on here for the Malle Center Trust Fund. So I would move that.
A second. Thank you, Member Woodward. Thank you, Member Anderson. Anything else for members of council? Seeing none, can, do we need a motion, or do we need a vote on the change? Yeah, okay. Can we please vote on the change?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Perfect. Thank you very much, everyone. Moving on now to Agenda Item 7, this is recognition of scheduled public comments. Sorry, was there... Ah, sorry. We do have to vote on the motion. Can we vote on the motion as amended?
Make a move to approve the resolution appointing boards and commission members as amended.
Thank you, Member Anderson. And the second is Member Noonan Camp. Thank you both. Any further comment? Seeing none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to Agenda Item 7. This is the recognition of scheduled public comment. The deadline to sign up to speak for scheduled public comment is Wednesday by 5:00 PM prior to the meeting through the City Clerk's office. This is an opportunity for the public to address city council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. And please limit your presentation to five minutes. Up tonight, Member Anderson will be giving a reply to scheduled public comment. And up first is Ms. Kathleen Bailey, an Inglewood resident here to address council.
I'm sorry, she notified us that she would not be here.
Thank you so much, City Clerk. Moving on to the second speaker, Mr. Gary Kozak, an Inglewood resident here to address council regarding the referendum. Good evening, Mr. Kozak. If you could state your name and your address or cross streets.
Gary Kozak, Inglewood, Colorado.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kozak, your microphone's not on.
Go ahead, Mr. Kozak.
Inglewood, Colorado, Gary Kozak. Born and raised here my entire life.
Mr. Kozak, did you want to provide your cross streets or your direct address?
Near the Inglewood Recreation Center.
Thank you, Mr. Kozak.
I do have to apologize. I'm going into throat surgery tomorrow morning, so if I don't make it quite as clear, I apologize to everybody. The city council members, I've heard some comments back from people that the pictures and all that I showed and stuff, that they kind of took it lightly. So I have something to return to the city of Inglewood. Yes, that's the sign on our bike path right in front of my house. This isn't the only time it gets run over, but a few weeks back, it got clobbered. And the guy destroyed his truck. Yes, the police went ahead and signed him a ticket. Okay, that'll pay to replace the sign. I wouldn't have even brought it here, but it ended up in my yard, and I thought I could make a point that how dangerous this is becoming over there. Okay? Yes, the ticket will pay for it, but what if he was a child? Or a human being? What kind of price are we going to put on that? This is a little island over there that people walk onto to wait to cross Oxford. We don't have a designated crossing lane anywhere near the recreation center. It's all the way up at the bottom of the hill for the school. Negligence. The city council missed the opportunity to have the developer for the traffic, the new developer there, to pay for a traffic study. That should have been done. But now it's going to cost the city of Inglewood residents and stuff the cost of having a traffic study. We used Cora to come in and get the information from the city, and there is no formal traffic study. The study that you guys have seen was produced by the developer himself. And just saying in there, it was just a format that this is our traffic, how many vehicles we have here, and how much it would influence the traffic. It was not a formal traffic study. The problem you're going to face now, because I've presented this several times, is a possible negligence if you do not have a traffic study. Because you've been brought to the attention that there's a major, major issue there. I'm not talking about the development, I'm talking about infrastructure. You need an all-around traffic study. And you've got another apartment being built that's almost ready to open, and then you've got one right across the street here with another 309, and low and behold, they're going to use that wind mirror to get up there. Now, as far as the petition and stuff, I want to thank all the people that helped us in going out and circulate to get signatures. This is a petition in attempt to show how many concerned citizens, even who are not on the voter rolls, and non-residents that go to the Inglewood Recreation Center. Many, many of them would have loved to have a sign because of the traffic problems that they face coming to visit Inglewood. About two-thirds of the people I talked with were visitors coming into the UZREX Center. Oh, and by the way, the PNZ, in our Cora study, there's been several meetings that, oh my gosh, the recorder didn't work. The one that I tried to find out about metal goals having a representative. The referendum I've got to present, my last point here, is when I applied for that referendum, it stated a traffic study, air quality, noise. And then there was a sideline at the end that there should be an additional consideration of the possible pollution from what we had heard a diesel tank and news had that it had leaked. That's what the petition was all about. I've been accused, I've been subpoenaed in for Friday, right here, and they're telling me that I lied to the public.
Mr. Kozak, your five minutes are up. Any questions for Mr. Kozak? Thank you for your time. Actually, Mr. Kozak, just a quick question. So are you saying that there wasn't a traffic study done as part of the PUD, or can you...
There was never an official traffic study done by the city. It was done by the organization, the developers themselves. We got the Cora results of it, and yes, you guys were presented as a traffic study. That was not a study where they counted the number of vehicles and stuff, okay? That was a study showing them telling you how that will affect the traffic, coming from their point of view.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kozak. Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you. Mr. Kozak, can you tell us the location of where that sign is at?
Right at Oxford and Le Pan.
Oxford and Le Pan.
And the fire hydrants been hit several times. And the city of Inglewood even worked with me by pushing snow across from the parking lot of the rec center to go ahead and make a pile of snow on that island because it would get run over. And what they did was went in and had flop signs put up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other than this exception of this one here.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Kozak? Seeing none, Mr. Kozak, thank you for your... Oh, sorry. Member Wink, you do have a question. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kozak, on your statements about the traffic study and the lack of legitimacy, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask our city manager, did we not conduct a traffic study that adhered to the law and that fulfilled the requirements of our city government? Did we or did we not? I just want to make sure I'm correct in what I'm thinking.
Actually, Member Wink, if we can save that question until the very end as part of a...
Sure, yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
It doesn't matter because the point is, I went Cora, and we got all the information on what studies have and have not been done. I was on city council during the development of that very site.
Mr. K...
And I have an vested interest because I stood up for all the people when that intersection was supposed to be 16 feet deeper.
We will answer that question at the end of a public response, so I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much for coming.
And thank you. Oh, I do have to thank the city and make point to the city manager that your staff has been very, very professional and upright in representing and answering our questions and stuff towards the petitions and/or
Thank...
this other stuff going on. So I wanted to make sure officially, we have, you know, give you thanks.
Thank you for that, Mr. Kozak. Up next is Mr. Chris, members of the... Mr. Chris Dewis, you're up next. Mr. Dewis? Good evening, Mr. Dewis. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
Chris Dewis. Bellevue and Broadway.
Go ahead, Mr. Dewis.
I'd like to play a little video for you first. I muted the sound on this video for a reason, because I didn't want to get people in trouble. But all the city workers agreed with what I have to say tonight. The people that work for the city and retired people that worked for the city for 15 years, that used to clean this out when it had concrete in the bottom, and they were able to clean it. It took six weeks to clean this. They could have done it in two days. But it took six weeks. Actions speak louder than words. It took over six weeks to clean the grates and all the debris at Little Dry Creek. The city approved Mile High Flood District to redesign the area through mill levies that are paid by property owners in the city. The design ended up with major flaws. Who approved this design? Because of the design, it's costing our citizens hard-earned money. The city also ripped out concrete that enabled access to clean out the debris. The city doesn't have the right equipment to maintain the grates. They used to have a big loader. What happened to it? You need to do better research before you approve engineering plans. I've built bridges, culverts, roads, buildings, all from the ground up. So I have a good amount of knowledge in these areas. I'm also a general contractor. I'm proficient in running and maintaining heavy equipment my whole life. So when I see issues in front of my very eyes, I can't hold back. I hate having to explain things to people that are supposed to watch our, over our city and neighborhoods. Thousands of cars drive by Little Dry Creek every day. People from all over the metro area look over at what is supposed to be a show point of our city. Our own citizens are ashamed of how the city maintains this project. I talk to city employees and retired employees. They all agree something is wrong with the overall management of this city. Why has a city cut back on its street department and employees? That's just one of the reasons this project can't be maintained properly. And our streets are a mess, our alleys are a mess. You can't blame Mile High Flood District for this disaster, but you approved it. You're lucky it didn't rain harder and faster. The water almost breached the top. It would have flooded lots of businesses. What emergency plan does the city have in place of this flood? Do you honestly think it was more important spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on Inglewood logos than spending money on our infrastructure?
Mr. Dewis, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions from members of council? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. When did you take this video?
The pictures, I've been going down there for the last six weeks. This actual, the video part was like a few days ago, maybe three or four days ago.
Okay.
I started on this project like six, six weeks ago, just kind of following to see what's going on with it.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, Mr. Dewis, thank you for your time tonight.
You should have questions.
Moving on...
You should have a lot more questions.
And that now concludes scheduled public comment. We're moving to unscheduled public comment. Same rules apply, but you're limited to three minutes. We have about six speakers here tonight. Up first is Joseph DeSimone. I may have mispronounced the last name, but here to speak about parking.
Good evening. First time I've been here.
Yes, good evening. And your last name?
My last name is DeSimone.
DeSimone, okay. Mr. Simone, if you could just state your name and your address or your cross streets?
I live in the 3300 block of South Lafayette Street, here in Inglewood.
Perfect. Go ahead, Mr. Simone.
My concern is right now, I was down at the meeting on, at L U Park last week, and I was looking at all your charts and stuff. And what I saw about what you're going to do with Broadway, I think is kind of ridiculous. You're going to lose a lot of business, or the people are going to lose a lot of business because by putting in a medium, a bus lane and bike lane, and taking all the parking out, you're losing revenue and as a resident, that I would go down there and go to a restaurant or whatever it is, and if I can't park in front of the restaurant that I'm in, where do I park? Where do I go? Do I have to walk three or four or five blocks in order to get to a restaurant or to a business? And with the wintertime, snow, stuff, what happens? Where do people park? And I don't think the people that have the businesses along Broadway right now even know that they're going to lose their parking. I don't think the plan is that great. I don't know. That's basically really all I have to say about it. It's just that I just think that it's kind of ridiculous what you're trying to do. And I don't think it was very planned, very well planned of for parking for people that want to visit the, or frequent the businesses and the restaurants. That's my concern.
Anything else, Mr. DeSimone?
The other concern that I have is that monstrosity that you're putting up there where Bollocks much where it used to be. I live right down the street from that. And we are going to have nothing but traffic up the whatever. I mean, it's just going to be... We have enough traffic coming down Lafayette Street now as it is. And then you turn around and put that. Apartment house or whatever that thing is on the corner. You can't see around the corner right now. I don't even know if they're going to even put a traffic light up there or stop sign. A stop sign doesn't do any good. Uh, they don't even, nobody abides by them. Um, I live four houses from Floyd and I can. Watch people on their bikes come flying down the street and they go right through the stop sign. I'm just waiting for somebody to get either hit or killed. That's, you know, I mean, I'm concerned about some of these people. And I'm not a bike rider. I haven't been on a bike on, since I was like ten. And that's been many years ago. So, but other than that, I mean, I, I just think that you, you need to kind of. Think about what you're going to do before you do it.
Mr. DeSimone, thank you very much for your attention tonight. Your three minutes are up. Uh, Member Anderson does have a question for you. Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. DeSimone, my question is the Broadway. Um, the issue you're talking about, is this from the Broadway corridor study that was held in the community room last week? Is that the? Is that what the plan you're talk, plan you're talking about?
Um, I, wha- what I saw was on the chart that you had at Bellevue Park last week.
Okay, is.
Okay, and it shows where they have the median in, in the middle, then the bus lane. And then they're going to take out the parking to put in a bike line, a lane. So when these people have to get on the bus because the bus is going to be on the.
Right.
Lane closest to the median. They're going to have to have crosswalks. That's going to slow up traffic.
I'm just, I'm just asking if you're talking about the Broadway corridor stud, the study.
I think so. I, I don't know.
That's what you're referring. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I got that right. Thank you, Mr. DeSimone.
Any further questions for Mr. DeSimone? See now, Mr. DeSimone, thank you very much for your time tonight. We'll provide a response here once we're done, um, getting through each of the speakers.
Okay, alright, thank you.
About fifteen minutes. Thank you very much, Mr. DeSimone. Up next is, uh, Mr. Doug Cohn, here to speak about history. Good evening, Mr. Cohn. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Good evening. Doug Cohn, thirty fifty-one South Marion Street. I want to talk about cities and towns and museums. We need a history museum here. To give you a little bit of a perspective. History museums tell the stories of the founders. Of special people who made a difference, important events and family stories. Adams County has twelve cities and towns in the county. It has ten publicly owned history museums. Jefferson County has seventeen cities and towns. And it has seventeen publicly owned mu- history museums. Arapahoe County has fourteen cities and towns. I'll name them here. Aurora, Bennett, Byers, Centennial. Cherry Hills Village, Columbine Valley, Deer Trail, Inglewood, Foxfield. Glendale, Greenwood Village, Littleton, Sheridan and Strossburg. Fourteen cities, we have twelve. Publicly owned history museums. Can you guess which two cities don't have one? I think it's time for Inglewood to have a publicly owned history museum. So that we can share our amazing history with the neighboring communities and with the world. Thank you.
Mr. Cohn, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions? See now, Mr. Cohn, thank you for your time tonight. Up next is. Uh. Reagan, uh, with no, uh, topic given.
You almost pronounced it right. It's Regan. R E G A N. I wrote it in very plain letters for you, Mayor. And don't ask me for my personal information. It's creepy. I'm not giving you my damn address. So, on the note of why I'm here tonight, it's really not an ask of city council because I doubt you guys are really. That concerned about how your city is responding to homelessness. But if you're going to do anything, I would ask you to help Mr. Lewis over here. Hold All Health accountable to the contract that you approved. To the tune of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year to do case management. For homelessness in your city. Because they're not doing it. I'm going to give you a, an example of a specific case. On May twenty-third, I walked into your police department as any person could do and say, I'm homeless. I need help. I am a nonprofit that doesn't have access. To a system that starts a housing process. Only the government can do that. And those associated and partnered with government can access that system. So I go into your police department on the twenty-third of May. I talked to a caseworker by the name of Ally with All Health. Who says she's going to do some things. She ends up not doing those things. Four weeks later. We're still trying to activate resources in Inglewood through your Tri-Cities Homelessness Initiative that you all approve. You guys keep approving this stuff and none of you know how it's not working. You need to know how these things are not working. So now these homeless folks are back over in Denver. Because lo and behold, your code enforcement and cops were harassing the hell out of them because All Health failed. To fulfill their contract to provide homeless case management. I've asked Mr. Lewis to address that situation. I don't know if he's feeling helpless in the situation. I don't know if he thinks Tri-City homelessness is going to pick up the pieces. Because now they're just starting to get involved, even though their services failed in your public library. When we took the homeless woman to meet with a housing navigator. And I expect a lot of questions. At the end of my public comment. And the housing navigator for Tri-City's homelessness had nothing to offer her except the flyers on the wall. What are you doing over here in Inglewood besides criminalizing the homeless? It's not working. And people, everyone in this room. If you think government is going to stop at this level of criminalization against the homeless. Wait till it ends up at your front door because your agenda doesn't fit it anymore. I'm tired of people not coming together on the issue. I'm tired of government wasting money.
Is up. You're at your three minutes tonight. Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Member Russell does have a question for you.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, so the homeless navigator that was in the library, were they from All Health Network?
No, they were not. Tri-City's homeless. Gr- your county effort.
Okay, and they, do they have operating hours in the library?
They have operating hours down there. They do. And we went during their operating hours.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Regan, I have a question. What was the type of help that, um. The woman that you spoke of, what was it that she was looking for?
Well, that gets into what All Health would describe as HIPAA violations. Okay, so they feel they don't have to communicate on case management. So the help these folks need is housing navigation. There are other complicating factors in there that All Health should have addressed immediately.
Thank you, Ms. Regan. I think you answered my question. Uh, any further questions for members of council? See now, Ms. Regan, thank you for your time tonight. Up next is Benjamin Ben David, I believe. Good evening. What, did I get, get the last name correct?
Yeah, good evening. Uh, Benjamin Ben David. Uh, cross street is, uh, Lincoln and Amherst, and I want to address crime in Inglewood. Um, I have specific dates here, um, going back a little bit. And I'm, I'm just going to go through that and I'm going to stop at certain points, which I think are pretty important. Um, on three twenty-five, twenty-one, a homeless trespasser went into my backyard at my address. And, um, EPD responded and I asked for a criminal trespass ticket to at least be given and that, that was not. That didn't happen even though I, I demanded it. On four-two-twenty-one, a motorcycle was riding down the sidewalk at high speed. And the rider was arrested by EPD. Um, this motorcycle wasn't a small motorcycle, wasn't a moped. It was a full-size Harley-Davidson, going about forty miles an hour. Um, when the person was arrested, I was informed by EPD. Uh, that this person is affiliated with the two-eleven crew. And I don't know if you know who they are. Uh, they were a white supremacist gang that was started in the prisons here in Colorado. Um, and, uh, there's about five thousand of them and they're in mostly in Colorado and in Texas. And what they do is, is just unconscionable. Uh, I'm not going to give you the address that this motorcycle came from. But, um, that address is, how should I put it? Very forensically active. They still are and they deal in drugs, um, homelessness. And by, by that, I mean they traffic homelessness, you know, and they also deal with, um, other things. And if even ten percent of what I'm saying is true about this address, it's a very serious problem. Because the two-eleven crew is a very serious problem in Inglewood. Uh, they had a shootout with Inglewood Police a couple of years ago at, at the Walgreens. Uh, I think down on Dartmouth and Broadway, and that was a very tragic event. And they're still around and this, and this address is still around and they're very active. Uh, the next one happened on four-eight-twenty-one. A homeless broke into the address at twenty-seven fifty-six South Broadway. They told the locals they were there repairing the building. I don't know if any arrests happened with that. Um, four-twenty-five, twenty-one, um, uh, a male was seen screaming and yelling in the Broadway behind my address. EPD was called, uh, outcome unknown. Five-twenty-six, twenty-one, an intoxicated homeless was acting out behind my house. EPD called outcome unknown. Um. Homeless again, uh, engaged in criminal trespass at twenty-seven fifty-six on six-twenty, eight-twenty-one. EPD called outcome unknown. Uh, eight-twenty-six, twenty-one, an overdose, uh, happened right behind my house. EPD and EMS were called. I, I imagine they, they gave this person Narcan or whatever was, uh, the good remedy for that situation. Uh, let's see here. Uh, I was personally threatened at Bates Logan Park in Inglewood, uh, by a homeless person. It was clearly under the influence.
Mr. Ben David, your three minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for your time tonight. Any questions? Go ahead, Member Noon Camp.
Mr. Ben David, it's good to see you. Thank you for being here tonight. Just to be clear, are all the instances that you shared tonight from the year two thousand twenty, are all the instances that you shared tonight from two thousand twenty-one?
I'm sorry?
Uh, just, are all the instances that you shared tonight from two thousand twenty-one?
Yeah, I just wanted to go with that. I could have done them more recently. But, you know, um, I know that Inglewood has said the crime has gone down by five percent. But I have far more of these on, on a double infold. I just gave these back in the past because I've, I've recorded these for years. And these events are just within a three block radius from where I live and what I see because that's, that, that's where I go. I. I ride a bike quite a bit. And, um, I get around the area and I see what's going on firsthand. That alleyway behind. My address, all the way from Amherst to Inglewood is just a, it's a, it's a. It's a hotbed for people to use who don't want to be seen by EPD on the streets. There's lots of crimes back there going on. Yep.
Okay, and are you aware that the city council has added six police officers since two thousand twenty-one?
I, I still can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Are you aware that the city has added six police officers since two thousand twenty-one?
Yeah, yeah, I know that. And if, if you add one police officer, you actually have to add six or seven for, for the shift, one to replace an officer if they're sick. But, um. All these things that I'm talking about, and I have about twenty more on here that are coming more into, um, more recent times. You know, it, it ends with outcome unknown or arrest not made. And when this person. Trespassed on my property clearly there, I had pictures of that and I demanded the arrest for criminal trespass. It was not followed through with. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ben David, just a quick question. Are you able to share any of the other information that you weren't able to get to tonight?
I'm sorry.
Are you able to share any additional information that you weren't able to cover tonight?
Yeah, I can, I can share this information. I have it on my hard drive at home so I can send it to anybody's email. I have lots more as well.
If we're able to get your contact information from our city clerk.
Okay.
Love to reach out. Thank you very much, Mr. Ben David. Uh, up next is Adam A. Nickel here to discuss history. Good evening, Ms. Nickel. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Um, I live in the forty-seven hundred block of South Le Pen. Um, good evening, council. I'm speaking tonight, um, on our history. Uh, actually, I'm speaking on Littleton history. Um, way back about twenty-some years ago, when, uh. When our council at that time, uh, let the Museum of Outdoor Arts in and had that space for all of those years. Uh, the Littleton was putting their money into a museum. And you all have a copy. Of, of what their museum looks like now. And I don't know how many has been there. But it would be wonderful if you could all take a trip out there and see what they have done over the years. It started small, but it, it has grown and it has grown. And, um. It's been noted clear across the country now. It says the Littleton Museum is accredited by the American Alliance of Museums. And was the first museum in Colorado to be recognized as an affiliate of the Smithsonian Institution. And like you say, their city has given them money. And I don't know, I haven't found out yet. I didn't ask how much. But yearly in their budget, they are, they get so much money. And now because they've grown so much, they, they're getting money with other, other events and things that they're having. But I just wanted you to see, I know we don't have, we don't have land like they had at that time. But I was out there today and I talked with them for a good hour. And they said they were so thankful that they started when they did years ago, or they would not have this today. And I guess the point I wanted to make, if we would have started on our history when some of us wanted to do that. And we were shut down, um, we could have had more at that time than what we have now. And so I'm not sure if we're going to get an area for a museum. But, um, we have more history in this little city than most of the cities around us. And our, our, none of our city knows about it. And so it would just be wonderful if you could think about it, if you're, if we're going to be able to get a space or even have a history. And I'm just wondering about that. So that's why I brought this up to see. What was, people work together over a long period of time, what they can have. And I think Inglewood should have that as well. We have a lot of rich history. And I think folk, we have a lot of new folks coming in that are so interested. When I talk to the new folks, they're so interested. In just the stories I've been able to tell them so far. And they, they want to be a part of it. So I'm just hoping that you will think about us and be gracious and help us out. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nickel, for your words tonight. Uh, Member Woodward has a question for you.
Yeah, thank you for. This cover sheet also. Um, and I'm just wondering, and I'm betting that you are aware of this. The little schoolhouse that's shown there.
Yes.
And where did it come from?
Inglewood.
Thank you.
But they don't tell you that. I asked a little gal that they have, they have it coming from a different source, but it was actually Inglewood.
Yes.
It was the first, yes.
And if I remember correctly, and I'm fairly sure I do. In, or Littleton has an ordinance. That provides the same pricing for Inglewood people. Inglewood citizens at this museum that Littleton citizens enjoy.
Oh, um, well, actually, that museum is free to get into it, to anyone. You don't, you don't have to pay to get into it. But actually, that little, uh, building that you're talking about, it was the first one built in Arapahoe County.
Correct.
Yeah. So thank you.
Beginning of Inglewood School District number one.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., or Member Woodward. I see no further questions. Ms. Nickel, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
And last on the list is, uh, C N Dickerson here to, um, actually, no topic given. Good evening, Ms. Dickerson. If you could state your name and your address or cross streets.
C N Dickerson, Bates Logan. I've been very saddened and concerned about what's been going on in the city I have loved for twenty-five years. Problems seem to have multiplied exponentially over the last four years. In doing due diligence about rules for individual members on committees and boards. I realized most of them had strict rules about attendance. For instance, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, the requirement is seventy-five percent attendance. Violation has led to two members being removed. Violation has led to two members being removed by council over the last two years. If attending scheduled meetings is a requirement of volunteer citizens, should it not also be required of council members? Should you not have a policy of requiring no more than 25% absences? The article in the recent, the recent article in the Inglewood Herald is indicative of the disrespect in which you have held citizens whom you represent when they speak before you. Another issue is the multiple Tri-Cities organizations that council and staff are involved with. We have a charter and are independent of other cities. If you are making decisions about citizens and the way our city is run and where our money goes in meetings with Littleton and Sheridan under the umbrella of an intergovernmental agreement, why does that excuse you from open meeting laws? Seemingly, your actions and decisions are hidden. Nothing seems to be working in any of these homeless organizations. There are so many of them, and money seems to be changing hands. 3 million has changed hands recently, and we've seen no results. There's Tri-Cities Navigation Center. There's Tri-Cities Homeless Initiative. There's Tri-Cities Homeless Policy Group, which is the only one that seems to have some governmental legal status. We citizens are a free people who are beginning to claim our rights. You need to remember that you are employees. We are the boss. Stop wasting our money putting out expensive mailings with false claims of 23,000 citizens attending meetings. It never happened. It can't happen. You never even get 8,000 voting. You can barely get 100 at any meeting, and you certainly have not had any real response to any surveys. It is ridiculous, and you grossly overstepped with this kind of nonsense, besides wasting a ton of money.
Ms. Dickerson, your three minutes are up.
Can I say one final sentence?
One last sentence, yes. Go ahead.
We little citizens are waking up, rising up, and claiming our rights.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. Any questions for Ms. Dickerson tonight? Go ahead, Member Woodward.
The flyer that you were holding up, I'm sorry, I can't see that from here.
This is the one that went out last, two weeks ago. Code Next, Inglewood. More than 23,000 of you filled out a survey, attended a community meeting, or visited the Inglewood Engage page regarding updates. Not a chance in hell that you possibly have gotten 23,000 different people.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. Any further questions? C.N., Ms. Dickerson, thank you for your time tonight. And with that, that concludes unscheduled public comments. I'll give Member Anderson a moment to, unless he's ready to respond now.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for everyone for coming out to speak tonight. We really appreciate hearing feedback from the community. I'll start with Mr. Kozak. I really agree that Oxford does invite fast-traffic a street that wide with that wide of lanes. I'd hoped that putting in the bike lanes there would make those lanes feel a little tighter and slow down traffic a little bit. But I do think we need more traffic calming improvements all the way along that street. I think that is one, that one is a serious consideration. And I would love to see some traffic done on that street, as well as many others. And traffic calming projects are very expensive. So I do appreciate you returning the sign, and we do hope, you know, I'd love to see some traffic calming done along there. Mr. Duss, I really appreciate you monitoring the situation at Little Dry Creek. Obviously, we did approve that project, and I think it's unfortunate that it's not draining well and would love to see, you know, see the improvements done. I know we're in conversation with Mile High Flood District as to what we can do about that to improve that grade, improve the drainage along there. That is a priority for us when we do an engineering project like this. Those of us on council don't always know what the outcome is going to be, but we certainly hope to fix any problems after the fact that we discover. Sometimes that kind of stuff gets by us, and we really do appreciate you monitoring us and keeping us informed as to the status of the Little Dry Creek Drainage Area. Mr. D. Simone, I believe that what you're referring to is the Broadway Corridor Study. And this is a, and I'll let the city manager correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is a study of Broadway that's actually done by another jurisdiction, not the city of Inglewood. And we have not approved any plans related to the study, and it really is just a study. So there's been no votes on it. These changes are not happening in Inglewood, and this is not something we've approved. And we're on it, I went to the Broadway Corridor Study presentation that they had just here in the community room, not the one at Bellevue Park, but I was learning along with you. So honestly, this was my first time seeing some of these plans. And I thought, you know, I'm not sure that Broadway through Inglewood is a good place to have dedicated transit lanes along each side of the road. I don't think, thank you, I appreciate that. I don't think we have the level of bus utilization that we would need to support that kind of transit system. If we had that, you know, if we had that kind of density, that places that run bus transit, dedicated lanes, then it may be appropriate, but it's not appropriate, as far as I can tell, in Inglewood at this time, in my opinion. I'm only speaking from my own opinion. But I'm learning about this study too. Not something that we're doing, and it's not something that we've approved, though I do think Broadway needs improvements, but probably more modest kinds of changes than what this study is proposing. Mr. Kohn and Ms. Nickel, thank you so much for coming to speak about the idea of putting a historical museum in Inglewood. I do think it's a wonderful idea, and I, you know, I can only speak for myself, but I would love to see any way the city could support a project like that. Those are conversations I would certainly like to have, and I thank you for bringing that before us. And then Mr. Ben David, I'm sorry for the challenges you've had on your property and around your property with crime. I know this is a challenge that's going on in a number of places. And, you know, we're working on it the best we can, but we would really appreciate more information, as the mayor said. If you can send that stuff to City Council. And I know the property, you know, I thank you for not mentioning the specific address of the problem property there, but that sounds like something that could potentially be investigated as a nuisance property or something like that. So love to get that information in a private, you know, more of a private venue as well. And yeah, that's the comments that I have for tonight. Again, thank you, everyone, for coming out. We appreciate your comments here.
Thank you. Anything else from members of council? Go ahead, Member Wink.
Thank you, Member, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. One, there was the question I asked of the city manager while Mr. Christus was, right after he had presented. It was just, I wanted to just confirm the study that was performed. It's almost gone away from me. I'm sure the city, you may remember, but I feel like Mr. Jus' concern was that we hadn't performed a valid study. City Manager Lewis.
No, thank you, Member Wink. Yeah, we got to get back to that. So regarding the traffic study, regarding the PUD, go ahead.
Thank you, right.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Member Wink. Yes, I think the question was around the traffic study for the PUD at Sam's Automotive. And so City Code does require a traffic study for this level of development, and there are certain criteria that are found in code of what that study must contain. That study, in this case, was performed by a company that I've just been told, HKS. They do have a team of licensed traffic engineers on staff. Those studies are required to be performed by qualified individuals. After they are performed to our standards, then they are reviewed by the engineers in Public Works to verify their accuracy, ensure that all of the areas that was in the study area was correct. And so that was done per City Code and reviewed by staff.
Wonderful.
Just heard a question from the audience. That was this year.
Thank you, City, thank you, City Manager Lewis. Member Wink, did you have a second item?
I do. Two others, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Go ahead.
And then, Manager Lewis, if you don't mind, would you kindly explain our process in Inglewood for ensuring compliance with the All Health Contract?
Thank you, Member Wink. Yes, I did have several conversations with Ms. Benson this week and last week and was very concerned to hear about the case management that she was speaking to. And did reach out to Chad Reed. He's the division chief in the police department that oversees that area, the co-responder, the case manager. You remember that City Council added that case manager position after the Police Reform Task Force recommended that back in 2020, 2021? And so that case manager has been compiling a lot of data. I have asked for a full audit of that. All of the All Health staff members that we have were at a conference last week, and so they have not gotten that to me, but assured me that that audit would start this week. And we do hope to have that back and appreciate Ms. Benson bringing that up. We plan to correct any discrepancies that may exist there.
Of course. Thank you, Manager Lewis. And one final point. I would like to, I typically submit my council requests online through the portal, but I'd like to submit one, a council request here tonight for documentation regarding public engagement noted in the Code Next flyer, given the statistics were challenged pretty blatantly here. So I'd like to submit that, please.
Thank you very much, Member Wink.
Mayor, can I make one correction?
City Manager Lewis.
The Public Works Department has it for me that all data collected on the Sam's PUD was in 2021, so I apologize.
Okay. Thank you very much, City Manager Lewis.
Brilliant. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else from members of council? Member Anderson, you're like Stallone.
Nope.
All right, and with that, that concludes scheduled public comments. I'm assuming that we probably just want to move on to consent agenda items. We have 9B1 that has been pulled. Any others that we want to pull tonight? C.N., can I get a motion to approve 9A1, 9B2, 3, 4, 9C1, and 2?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Ciara?
Aye.
At the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. Going back to 9B1, this is Council Bill 22, amending Inglewood Municipal Code Regarding Reimbursement of Police Department Costs. Member Russell, I believe you have a question, I believe maybe directed at City Attorney Niles.
Yes, and I'm just going to read the four questions that I had because I know the city attorney already has an answer for them. Who will determine what is the appropriate fine and cost? This is for Council Bill 22. Who will monitor who is charged and who is not? How will individuals be charged? Will this ordinance in any way create a due process problem for anyone involved?
Go ahead, City Attorney Niles, sorry.
Yes, thank you for the questions. I'm Councilmember Russell. First, the ordinance now, as drafted, imposes certain fees that can be recovered by the police department from the people that caused them to incur the cost. For example, if they serve a document for somebody, then it authorizes the city to then bill and recover the cost of serving that document or for transportation, things like that. So it's a cost recovery mechanism. So it authorizes us to then bill it and then hopefully someone to then pay that bill. So the amount of the fee is set within the ordinance, so there's no discretion on the part of staff in doing it. If PD provides the service listed within the ordinance, then they will notify Finance. Finance will put it into our financial system and send out a city invoice, just like we do for any other fee that we're authorized to collect under Municipal Code as contained within the city's fee schedule. I did speak with Finance regarding setting up this process. They indicated they already have an account set up for PD fees, so it requires no additional work on their part to set it up on our accounting software. This doesn't create a due process issue, just like we send bills for all sorts of fees that people are required to pay us. For example, a water bill. We provide the service, we send a bill, people pay it. It's a very similar process. In this case, though, it's PD provides a service, city sends a bill, and somebody pays it. Now, if, when we do implement a collections policy that may authorize sending unpaid bills to a third-party debt collector, if that should go through that process, if it should happen to go before a judge, then someone would be given due process to challenge whether or not they owe the bill before a court order would be imposed finding they owe the bill. But otherwise, they don't have any due process concerns because it's simply receiving a service and us billing to recover for it.
Thank you for that. My question is, if somebody's charged with a crime and a police officer has to go to court, what happens if they're found not guilty? I mean, I'm assuming when police officers have to go to court to testify, they're trying to recoup that also as well, correct?
Yes, well, a prior version of the ordinance stated that these fees would be imposed by municipal court unless someone was found not guilty. But on the last revisions, we took out any provisions regarding municipal court. So in that case, if the police officer, well, in that case, if somebody's found not guilty, the municipal court judge does not impose any fines or costs. If someone is found guilty, the prosecutor could request that the court also impose this through the court process, to be paid through the court process instead of through just an administrative billing process. But the court would have discretion to do that, but no requirement. But I know of no cases where the court has imposed any fees when finding somebody not guilty.
So, I mean, I guess what I'm concerned about is, and maybe this doesn't apply here. In the police imposing funds or fines that maybe are selective in nature, they might impose it to one person and not another. I mean, how do we address that?
Well, the intent is it would be imposed uniformly because we're trying to just recover costs so that we can have additional resources for alternative police safety programs that we know our community supports. So we would anticipate it would be evenly and uniformly billed to everyone receiving the service. I'm not going to say they're not going to miss one here and there, but that's certainly not the, not the goal.
Okay.
Or not the plan.
All right. I do, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Member Russell. Any other questions for members of council? C.N., can I get a motion to approve 9B1?
Move to approve 9B1.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Could I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Any further comments? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Member Russell's questions bring up an interesting issue here. In America, if you are charged with a crime and you are found not guilty, you walk out of the courtroom free and clear without paying a dime. In the way we've structured this law, if you're accused of a crime, you're liable for $50 because we served a warrant on you. Or you're liable for $100 because we served a warrant on you, and then we took you to jail. I would like to see this amended so that anyone who is found not guilty, regardless of whatever charges were levied against them, is debt-free at the end of that process. I don't want to charge money to people who have been found not guilty, either by a jury or by the municipal judge, for the crime that we committed. I think that is a problem relative to the Bill of Rights, frankly. Punishing someone for something that we didn't convict them of is problematic to me.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Member Anderson?
What in the ordinance, what in the ordinance would need to be amended to get that? What's, where's the $50 fee at in the ordinance?
Section 2 lists the police department fees, and it lists them as factual fees. Serving and returning summonses, $35. Making a return on summons. The ones that I noted are transportation for a person who's taken into custody and sent to jail, $50. Then attending court, $150. Obviously, I don't want to pay the officer who arguably falsely accused me of something or accused me of something that I was found not guilty of, $100. or accused me of something that I was found not guilty of, a hundred and fifty dollars for the honor of having him testify against me in court if I'm acquitted. So that one I would I would dump as well. And then serving or executing a warrant, twenty five dollars. You know, we we can't assume and the system does not assume, the Constitution proclaims you're found you're innocent until proven guilty. So regardless of any reason that someone is found not guilty, I think they should be not liable for any of this.
There's an an interest, yeah, I had read those as fees that would only apply to people, but I I'm not seeing how the ordinance makes it clear that those fees would only apply to people found guilty. But it is something that is that just is this just a byproduct of having taken the language out of the, okay. So we just need to change the wording to ensure that these only apply to those found guilty somewhere.
Go ahead, City Attorney Niles.
I'm happy to propose a revision, perhaps for the EMC section one, six I dash two subsection C. It states, as presented, the costs herein may be administratively imposed and billed by the city. And we could add comma, except no criminal defendant shall owe a fee incurred for a criminal prosecution when the defendant is found not guilty.
Or the charges are dismissed for other reasons. I mean, I would, or maybe we word it the other way and say they're only liable if they're found guilty. I just, I think, I don't know, that one, that last part is controversial because you could have a deferred judgment or something like that where where they went through the process, they pled guilty and then eventually the charges were dismissed. I'm okay charging fees in that case, but what I what I want to be assured of is that someone who's outright found not guilty or through either failure to prosecute or some other reason not related to a plea bargain, the charges are dropped, they're not liable for for the.
Well, I can think of other instances when someone may drop a charge. For example, often if you're using a confidential informant, you may agree to dismiss or withdraw a criminal charge in exchange for testimony against somebody else, in which case it seems that perhaps we should still be entitled to get reimbursed for our costs even though the charge has been dismissed. Or perhaps the, there's so many charges pending in a federal case or a felony case that the prosecutor decides just to dismiss the charges here, so it's, we don't have to worry about some sort of getting them here when they are in South Dakota penitentiary or something like that. It seems like we should still be able to perhaps garnish their jail account for our charges. I'm thinking, I was a prosecutor for fourteen years. I'm thinking of, these are all times when I truly did dismiss charges against somebody. But it seems like we, maybe they should still pay our our fee, or at least we have a bill and then we could submit it to to garnish a jail account, which I have also done in the last fourteen years.
Yeah, that seems a little extreme to me, frankly. Jail's not a pleasant place to be and it's particularly unpleasant if you have no money to buy from the commissary, so. I I I don't know, if if they're not in our custody or they, or we didn't convict them, I I still would say these fees could be waived on on that basis personally. That's my my opinion as one of seven.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. I I thank you for that and really what draw my drew my attention to this was the very last sentence of the summary, which goes along with what Mayor Protem shared. Some of these costs are attending court proceedings, transporting arrestees to the jail, and pursuit and capture of each person charged with committing a crime, which, I added, does not equal guilt. And the bottom line is, I guess what I'm concerned about is that there are certain costs that taxpayers incur to run a city and and provide health and safety. And perhaps we shouldn't be recovering these costs from individuals. Unless it was involved in a court case where there's somebody that can decide whether they should be paid or not. I mean, I'm a little bit concerned that it it wouldn't necessarily, I I mean, it's the taxpayers in this city are already forking over a lot of money. I don't think that they're asking for an increase in the budget yet, are they? Or, I mean, is this too? I mean, right, currently in the twenty twenty three budget, if we started this right now, they would be able to recover these costs. But they already have the full budget amount, right?
Yes, but our thought is there's a state law that says sheriffs shall recover these fees. So if the sheriff can recover the fees for doing the same service, then our thought was, well, why doesn't our police department recover those as well rather than have our taxpayers pay them? And I just looked at the state statute, which is CRS thirty dash one dash one oh four. It it doesn't provide an exception if someone's found not guilty. It says fees collected by sheriffs shall be shall be as follows, and then it lists these fees and the amounts that they recover. So that's, we we just thought if the, if a county entity doing the same thing can recover these fees rather than making us as county taxpayers pay for them, then our police department should be able to recover their fees as well. So that that was the thought process.
No further questions, Member Russell?
No, not right now.
Thank you, Member Russell. Mayor Protem?
The provision you just read, does that include the language that's similar to the language that we struck regarding the courts assessing the fees?
No, that was that was not contained within there. It it just says a sheriff shall charge these fees. So it didn't, this has been in in drafting for a long time, so a lot of decisions have were made months ago regarding this. So I was just reviewing the original statute again to see exactly what we said was identical and what we said that was different. We simplified it a bit because they have quite a diff quite a few different categories of the expenses, charging set amounts based on a different set of facts with quite a few subsections and ours is, we tried to simplify it just to make it easier to understand and and implement.
Yeah, I don't I don't think I would make that change. I, I'll stick with what I said earlier. Not guilty, no, no payment, no cost.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Member Russell?
I agree with that and I I guess I would like, if if we were going to follow through on this, the differences between sheriff's departments and police departments, because I believe that sheriff's departments are much bigger in the scope of the work they do than police departments, however generally they're counties, I believe. So I don't know what difference that makes. But I do agree with Mayor Protem. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Mayor Protem, did you want to make a motion or? Oh, go ahead, Member Noonan Camp before the motion.
Before that, I just wanted to ask the city attorney with the Mayor Protem suggested change to the no fee if you're proven not guilty. Are there any legal concerns that you have with that change? No, I don't have any problem with it. We also wrote the ordinance to say the city may do this, which means we are authorized authorized to recover it, but not required to, thinking it would build in the the measure of discretion. If for some reason it's, the facts don't support it or it's inappropriate for some reason. I mean, we anticipate that it would just be a common consistent practice, but that perhaps the city prosecutor, when dismissing charges, could then request it be withdrawn or something like that. But I don't have any problem at all with eliminating the ability to bill altogether if someone's found not guilty. Okay, thank you.
Is there a way that we can elegantly capture, you know, excluding deferred judgments or plea bargains? You know, what I want to make sure is jury or judge finds someone not guilty, no payment. Charges dropped for a reason other than a plea bargain or a deferred judgment or, you know, something like that. Not guilty, because the prosecution in that case did not occur, regardless of what was charged and regardless of the reason. So I would like guilty defendants to pay this fee and people who fall in another category not to pay it unless they're subjected to a plea bargain where the charges are dropped. Deferred judgment usually pay court costs as part of a deferred judgment and I'd like to see a similar method here. Not that I have any experience in that area. That may complicate things a bit, but what I would hate to see having is have someone charged, then the police department says we charged them, we took them to jail, we assessed the fee. And then they're found not guilty for whatever reason, or the charges are dropped, and then they get a bill in the mail from the city and they don't know what to do and it slips through the cracks. That just seems unfair to me and it seems not right.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Anyone else? City Attorney Niles, do you happen to have a appropriate language in order for us to make a motion to amend?
I'm I'm trying to artfully draft this. So so I have an exception, no criminal defendant shall owe a fee incurred for a criminal prosecution when the defendant is found not guilty or when the prosecutor dismisses the charges without imposition of cost. That doesn't seem like it's artfully drafted with extreme clarity. Mayor Protem Ward, what what are your thoughts?
I was gonna say, when the prosecutor dismisses the charges for reasons other than a plea bargain. Or deferred judgment, maybe? I don't know if there's some other type of action that follows with a deferred judgment. Like usually probation is associated with a deferred judgment, so you wouldn't include that as something. Probation and deferred judgment, they usually run hand in hand.
City Attorney Niles, would you need a minute? Do you mind if we take like a three minute recess or a five minute recess? I know that if the Member Anderson has a cramp, so it may make sense for us to take a short break while we work on the proper wording, so.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, let's take a five minute recess and see if we could come up with the proper wording. We'll be back here at eight twenty seven. Thank you.
Well, we we work with codes, so we typically what happens is codes will say, hey, is there violation here? And we just say it's right here in code. Well, these are new stores. I mean, I get stores. See. We're working. Yeah. Sure. Some of them. Oh. It's. Oh, ten foot. Yeah. Yeah.
Happy, so make Steve happy makes me happy.
Members of council, if you could please be seated. Members of council, if you could please be seated. Thank you, everyone. I think picking up where we left off here, City Attorney Niles, I think we were just waiting for some verbiage, to consider a motion to amend. Go ahead, uh, City Attorney Niles.
Uh, yes, I during the break, I spoke with Mayor Protam Ward and Councilmember Russell, and um, we drafted some language to amend subsection C, to state the costs herein may be administratively imposed and billed by the city, comma, except no criminal defendant shall owe a fee incurred for a criminal prosecution when found not guilty, or when no prosecution ensues.
Thank you for that, City Attorney Niles. Any any disagreement with that verbiage? If not, uh, Mayor Protam, do you want to make the official motion to amend?
I move to amend the council bill currently on the table as the city attorney just indicated.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Protam. Thank you, Member Russell, any further comment? Seeing none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
All right, and can we just go ahead and just make a motion to approve as amended?
We've already had.
Oh, we did, we're.
So we're ready to vote, I think.
Yeah, I think we're good. Am I am I correct in that understanding? Okay, I think we're all set to go.
All right. Do you want me to call the vote for as amended?
As amended, sorry, there we go.
Yep. Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
That's what happens, we have a city council meeting on Tuesday, so. Uh, we have nothing for uh, item ten or item eleven, so we just move on to general discussion. Um, I don't have anything for uh, mayor's choice, so I'll open it up for his council members' choice. Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Uh, just briefly, I will be appearing remotely at our next council session, uh, because I will be at CML next week. Uh, so I'll be online and not in council chambers for that meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Uh, Member Woodward?
Uh, I will also be attending CML conference next week, so if wifi works and computers work, I'll be online also.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Anyone else? Uh, Member Noonan Camp?
I just want to share that the Cultural Arts Commission met week before last, and selected some really exciting new median art that is going through the process right now to ensure um, that we can actually place it with CDOT and Public Works and on all of those things, but very excited to see that project coming forward and for you all to see their selections very soon. Um, they had a very productive meeting, there's been a lot of engagement from the community around how we can support more public art in the community, including several requests for new murals, which we will be seeing this year, which is very exciting. Um, and also some great interaction from some local businesses, one of which is Swallow Hill Music, which you might be familiar with. They are uh, right across the street uh, from Inglewood on Yale, their parking lot is actually in Inglewood, it's on the other side of Yale. Um, and they are potentially considering a a future home for their school. If they'll stay in their location, I mean, we will consider a new one, and actually um, are looking at Inglewood, and so there's a great opportunity for us to attract those kinds of cultural institutions into our community, and it's a great sign for our city to know that we are a destination for an organization like that, which would add a lot to the uh, public art and the cultural art in Inglewood. So, all good things.
That's a fantastic opportunity, love to hear it, so. Member Russell, go ahead.
Thank you, um, I I don't have any boards and commissions updates, but I I do have one, a couple of things that I think that um, this council needs to make sure that um, COVID nineteen is over and we need to get back to in-person meetings. Um, I think all boards and commission meetings need to be in person, I think we need to um, move forward with that soon, and I also think that we need to um, go to in-person city council meetings and no hybrid meetings. I mean, in in past years during CML or NLC, we canceled um, the council meetings. Um, we just didn't have council meetings during that time to open it up uh, for that. But I would, the public wants us to be back in person, and I think that we do need to be back in person. So I would like us to weigh in.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anybody want to weigh in? Go ahead, Member Woodward.
I'll weigh in, uh, I would be supportive of that. Uh, you know, and I think there's certain things that happen or whatever, emergencies or whatever, where people might have to go hybrid or go online, but um, I remember NLC and CML, we didn't have any meetings this. The council member had mentioned, so I I would be in favor of that, I think I have thought the same thing in different boards and commission meetings, that we should be back in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodward, Member Anderson?
I'm supportive of moving to in-person um, or hybrid, hybrid meetings for boards and commi- the all uh, the all um, virtual meetings, I think is past its past its due date, so.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Noonan Camp?
I think being in person is fantastic, I try to be in person almost every single week. Um, the boards and commissions I'm on are almost exclusively in person, every once in a while, there's only one person online. Um, I will say, as someone with a job that requires them to travel, I have made it work in other countries and other cities to still be at these meetings, because it's incredibly important to me, and I would have to be absent due to the travel that my work requires, and so I think on the rare occasions that I have to do that, I like the opportunity to not miss a meeting and to still fully participate. Um, and so I would be disappointed if we said there's no hybrid option ever, but I think, you know, our as our policy manual states, uh, the preference is to be in person.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp?
I'll weigh in as well, I I I do prefer the in-person option. Um, I still would like the hybrid component for both council as well as for uh, boards and commissions. I think the one thing that I I meant to bring this up during our water and sewer board meeting this past Tuesday, and I I completely forgot, so I'm just kind of wondering, uh, can city staff reach out to the boards and commissions and just state that, you know, we would like to have a hybrid model, I guess, in at least in place, where you should be in person or at least get a room scheduled for each of these board or commission meetings, also provide a hybrid option, so. City Manager Lewis, is that possible, just because I failed to do this during the water and sewer board meeting, and I guess ETAG did meet this uh, earlier this month, and it wasn't brought up then either, so.
Thank you for the question, Mayor, I I think we we can do any of those things. The the challenge has been is that we've had lots of different ideas thrown out and not a con- council consensus. So if it's all right, could we put this on a study session, just to get at least four members telling us one thing to that they would like to do, because we've got a lot of direction on this. And and we're ready to do whatever y'all want to do.
I was gonna say, I don't know, I'm not sure if we really need a stu- a study session for this, but Member Anderson, go ahead and weigh in.
I was just gonna say, I think we may need some board and commission policy manual changes or um, city council policy manual changes, because we do, I think we do have reference to this in our policies, and it would be appropriate if we want to require in-person mea- I think now they're they're allowed to be uh, virtual meetings in the policy manual, and I I would just suggest changing that to require them to be in person with a hybrid option for the boards and commissions.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Uh, Member Wink?
Thank you, um, yeah, you know, my job requires that I travel quite a bit, and as you all know and have known, and and this has been the case since before COVID, right? It's not like a COVID thing, but um, because I work, you know, I'm a software architect, it's our, the way we work is quite flexible, and so it it doesn't, it it, so for someone to say, oh, you must be in person now, like, I work in a world, it's just very different than that. Um, however, I don't, I don't, similar to what Member Noonan Camp stated, I don't see, uh, you know, uh, um, you know, for people who don't work, or I I I get it, or they're not understanding it, but for, I mean, I work in software engineering, and I'm, because of my position, I'm always traveling, and sometimes it's, sometimes I know way ahead of time, sometimes I don't. Um, but I show up, it's it's, you know, pays my my, it's my livelihood. And so sometimes, like, I remember Member Woodward kindly asked once, can I join? And I knew that evening that we had an event, because it was a Monday, obviously, and we had an event that evening. Otherwise, if I'm sitting in my hotel room doing nothing, I can join, but so for you to demand that that we we must be in person, I think is, it's gonna be tough on people that have certain careers that that are active and that 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 require them, I mean, loads of young professionals work remotely. Um, won't apply for our boards and commissions if there's no virtual option, it's it's a part of, it's not that COVID's over, okay, we're we're doing this now. I mean, the world i- i- is is a little different than that now, and um, yeah, there are loads of young families that re- re- rely on these options, they have children, that that their livelihood, my neighbors, their their way of living is, oh, I can be home. Um, so for boards and commissions and for council in consideration of those policy changes, you know? I I mean, obviously, I, you know, I understand your opinions, um, but I I have a job that asks me to travel a lot. Um, so I, I don't know, I mean, I I'm not gonna quit my job to to make nine hundred dollars a month, eight hundred dollars a month, just so I can go in person every day, every week. It's it's just a little bit unrealistic. Um, and maybe council should move to a type of thing where people don't have careers that may ask them, you know, to miss some meetings. Um, you know, just things to consider, I mean, what are we really? What are we winning and what are we losing in what we're saying here?
Thank you, Member Wink. I I think from what I'm hearing tonight, it does sound like there is a preference to move boards or commissions to in person, but to provide a hybrid option. I think the same is true of city council members as well, because of just something does happen, so I I don't know if there's a need for a study session on the topic, but it does sound like, as Member Anderson stated, there is a need to update our uh, the board and commission manuals to properly reflect what's the expectation.
Member Noonan Camp, go ahead.
I would just add to make my position quite clear, one of the benefits of serving on a board and commission is also the relationship building, both with staff, with your with your community members you're doing the work with, and I do think we miss a lot of that when we're doing this um, in a hybrid environment. So I I agree with what you just said, Mayor, but would like to be clear that I think the the virtual option should be the exception and not the rule. There should be an effort to be in person, and you know, if you need, if you are traveling, if you are ill or something of that nature, there's a a hybrid option to ensure that a lot of these boards have sometimes trouble meeting quorum, and so we want to make sure we can do that as well.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Anyone else?
Don't see anything, is are members of council okay with the, just the ask that I had of the city manager to uh, reach out to the boards and commissions to state that the expectation is to be in person, but to provide a hybrid option? Okay.
All right. Anyone else for council members' choice? All right, we're moving on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm busy taking notes from that. Let me get back to my notes. Um, just a couple of uh, things to report. Number one, just wanted to um, let the public know is there's been a lot of interest in our valve replacement project that has led to a number of planned and some unplanned water shut-offs. Um, we now, um, as of Friday, have replaced forty-seven of the fifty-seven valves, and um, that work continues, um, we expect that to go on for another couple of weeks. We have um, worked with our contractor to really have a great understanding about where they're going next, so that we can give the public, um, you know, a a really good notice for that. And um, we've been doing a lot of phone calls, personal phone calls on that. Also wanted to report um, a project that I think started under Member Woodward's um, ti- time on council last. The Dartmouth Bridge is being demolished, the, I think it's the east, uh, excuse me, westbound lane, and so that project um, is finally underway, and we are um, working on that earnestly. Also really proud of the work that the Public Works team, um, Stormwater team is doing. They have um, been cleaning out a lot of our stormwater in uh, inlets. Um, as you can imagine, with all the rain that we've had, it's not just what you're seeing here at um, public comment um, about our inlet at the uh, at Little Dry Creek Plaza, it's all over the city. This amount of rain is generating a tremendous amount of debris, and we've had a real team effort between parks, um, between Public Works and between utilities to really keep an eye on all of these inlets to keep those cleaned. Um, and it's really been a full-court press, so I appreciate um, the concerns that you've heard about here, but the fact is, we are working on those issues all over the city, um, with inlets that are um, taking place, cleaning that is taking place. And last but not least, um, it's not too early to let you know about fireworks, um, so we want to just start letting the public know that July fourth fireworks are gonna be five to ten PM at Bellevue and Cornerstone Parks, uh, Park, the uh, fireworks will start at about nine fifteen PM. Um, we also have um, our, one of our Inglewood markets on Saturday, July first, here at the Civic Center, we want folks to come to. Kid's Stage and Movies at the Park is gonna be June twenty-fourth at Duncan Park with the movie time at six PM. And last but not least, and very upcoming, tomorrow is Celebrate Golf Day. Um, that's at Broken Tea, there's a barbecue at twelve PM to four PM, and invite the public out for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, City Manager Lewis, it's never too early, it's two weeks from today, so. Um, and congratulations, Member Woodward, for seeing it through, a destruction of a bridge. So, destroy our bridges. Uh, and with that, I think the meeting is now adjourned, it is eight fifty about. Everyone have a good week, see you guys next Monday.